They submitted POs and I called them and said, "No, there's a cap of each one. Two different trips, it's like 3,000, 3,500 things where they're free of course or what they're doing." And that's what we do at every school.
Right. Well, we are aware though that the ball team receives 100% of their expenses paid every time they go to state. And we would like to know the explanation of the difference of how that works compared to this one and what your policy, your written policy is on.
They don't receive 100%. With ball teams going to a state playoff game, they receive their travel, they run to all food they take care of by the team or the school.
Well, I would like a copy of the policy this change is based on.
It's not a policy, it's a procedure, but I can give you that item as well.
I would like that today, please, after the meeting, if that's possible. Excellent. Thank you then.
Anyone else? We move on to item four, in this other programs.
Yeah, 42 contracts we've had in place for so many years now, which we'll continue utilizing for home state.
For the recommendation by the superintendent, do you have a motion?
I move that we approve this project's motion.
Comment, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion concerning Paul Virchus? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
I'll have to just say.
Be overnight out state trips, Mr. Superintendent.
They've got two, one at the high school, they have a day trip, last part of June, they're going to Orlando. Second is a June day trip, national, and that takes place June 19th to the 23rd.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin, any discussion concerning the trips? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Yes, Chair of the superintendent, thank you. Six consent agenda, contain a motion to approve our regular session minutes or workshop minutes that are monthly by night before.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda along with the regular session minutes and monthly by night before.
Motion by Ms. Martin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion concerning the trips?
I would like to bring up our financial statement. It looks like we're very in the red here, unfavorable, and if Mr. Hawkins could explain why it's from 2013 to 2014 we're in the red.
I don't have a copy, if you have a. Which page are you looking at, the first page throughout?
I'm looking at the first page.
You will see there that there are about seven years of information down at the bottom of the page, 2008 through 2014. And these are the revenues compared to expenditure at the end of each month during those fiscal years. And you can kind of see a comparison across the years. Down at the very bottom of the page, you could of course see the staff positions that we have, revenue calculation. Let me just mention revenue calculation, that's a contributing factor, and the era money or the stimulus money has certainly impacted us. Revenue calculation back to 2008, the second line from the bottom, $23,95,409. That is the word 2008, and this comes directly off of the state calculation. And when everything kind of was sour and sour back during those years, we'll see the very next year, we drop to $22,285,696. That is a drop of, you know, quite significant drop in revenue that we would be receiving. And the next year, you know, it was still, we began to get in 2010, some, the third line from the bottom, we began to get some federal monies, stimulus money to assist districts because of the loss of revenue back in 2008 and '09. And if you will notice that all the way across to 2014, the revenue calculation, the last, second row from the bottom, the last number on the far right, $22,020,491, that revenue calculation directly, which is a combination of state and local monies, has not even reached, you know, back to the 2008 level. So essentially, our revenue has drifted down, it's beginning, and it's not back to what the level it was back to 2008. And you can see staff positions, how they have fluctuated during this period of time. And let me go the fourth row from the bottom, June, the final number. In 2008, we had an $895,000 loss in the general fund. That's where we ended up, that's the general fund alone. Of course, the 519 positions in the system, on the last row down there, that was, you know, you might say, one of the biggest contributing factors to $895,000 loss in the general fund. Go to the next column over, 2009, we had a $41,000 loss. We had a drop in revenue, but we also had a drop in number of positions, 507 positions in the system. So even though we lost revenue from one year to the next, from 2008 to 2009, we dropped positions, which in essence helped us to drop in the total loss in the general fund of $41,000. Go to 2010 and 2011, you'll see that on the June row, the fourth row from the bottom, for 2010 and 2011, we actually had some gains. Now, once again, that was, what contributed to that gain was, at least partially, was even though our revenue went down, revenue calculation, so versus 2010, we had $22,357,916, but our number of positions in the system went down. But we had some federal money, stimulus money kicked in, $2 million. I give you the long of it, but anyway, when stimulus money kicked in, number of positions went down for a couple of years, 2010, 2011, we were able, as we talked about in some of our budget workshops, we were able to put some money back, knowing that this stimulus money one day was going to go away. And when the stimulus money goes away, then we're going to have to, you know, whatever we may have put aside is going to assist us, you know, when the stimulus money goes away. So if you move across from 2010, the era money, the third row from the bottom, had $2 million. 2011, we had a million nine hundred forty-five thousand four hundred two dollars. Next year, it dropped, we lost a million dollars in stimulus money. And so our loss in general fund begins to pick up. You know, 2012, we ended $534,000 general fund loss. And 2012, fourth row from the bottom, 2013, $891. So you can kind of see the trend line as it is reversing back to the other direction, when the stimulus money has gone away. And prepare that with our revenue calculation, for second row from the bottom, has not really returned to the 2008, 2009 period of time. Number of positions in the system has changed also. So what that graph up at the top can tell you is that it kind of gives you a bird's eye view of how the year locks along. We have four, three years that I've actually graphed it, which is fully graphed in 2011, 2013. We'll see that the 2014 line is running below the other lines. Now, when we finish June, June is where the bottom falls out. It's fallen out every month prior to then, or every year, fallen out in that that we have all the summer checks that go out. Payroll is a big thing in the system, so when the June payrolls go out, you look at 2013, going from May, let's just look in the 2013 row column there, 1, 2, 3, the fifth row from the bottom, in May, we had a $492,000 to the black. Then go down one number under that, June, we went from $492,000 in the black to $891,000 in the red. That's when all the summer checks go out. That is when we conclude the year. Now, that's a million two change in one month. And you can look back at any one of the other previous years, 2012, in May, we went from $600,000 in the black to $534,000 in the red. That is a million one change in one month. So when all of our payroll begins to go out in the month of June, you will, we will see without a doubt, that that number is going to, you know, drop like a cannonball, you know, because of the payrolls that are going out. So we're going to have a significant red number come June.
But as far as the overall budget, are we okay, I mean, we're not, are we going to have to be cutting back on positions if we don't get the stimulus money?
Stimulus money's gone.
I see we've got 30 more positions this year than we had last year.
In 2013, we probably had some right at the end of the year, you saw they were rocking around 470 there for two or three years. 2013, we probably had some unfilled positions toward the end of the year, which might have contributed to the fact that they've dropped down to the 460 range. So we try to count positions in the system. We have some employees that have only one job in the system, so even though there's one employee, there may be only a couple, you know, possibly a couple of jobs. So we try, in order to be able to compare apples to apples, we, year to year, we try to count positions. But we have had some additional expenditure tiers this year, other than personnel. We have an air conditioning system with pumps to lean, ball field lights up at Popper Springs, I think the sewage up at Popper Springs. We've, there's another couple of items that, you know, we've had rather significant costs that hopefully we will not have anything like, not the same thing, I would be, and yours is going to pop up, because you always have unforeseen costs that are going to, that are going to arise from year to year. But we have had, so.
But in your opinion, for this time of year, where we need to be, are we, compared to other years?
Where we need to be, well, is this a sustainable course, no. General fund, we're going to, I would expect us to be 1.5, 1.6 million in the red in the general fund. We will have racetrack monies of $200,000, and we will have some additional 1.5 million money that we have spent on the architect, that's for about 300, about a half a million to help, you look at the system overall, in all funds, you got another 500,000 in racetrack, racetrack plus, plus the 1.5 million money that we'll have. And that 1.5 in the red is going to be after we apply, we're probably have close to, that's after we use that 500,000 to relieve us. So after we use the $200,000 of racetrack, use the over $300,000 in the capital projects, we will still, system wide, be in red, 1.5. Is this, is this favorable? I think you can make your own judgment from there. Is it, I mean, is it desirable, I mean, is it, you know, it's not a long-term sustainable course of course. So this kind of, this particular one page right here could kind of give you a, probably 90% of what you would perhaps need to be aware of. In general fund, obviously, is the biggest fund, and then the, and of course, its health or lack thereof is of significant importance. Of course, we've got, you know, the, once again, the racetrack monies that we generally report to debt service fund. Then we've got some capital projects monies that we can, you know, repair names that we can probably shift. And then the bus is to offset this cost of the buses, which I think you all recall, even when you wanted to use the racetrack monies for that purpose. Plus all that is reflected in the general fund, and we'll bring those back, half a million dollars over. And right now, at the end of June, that 400, that graph, the bottom graph of 2014, where you see 487 in the bracket, in the graph there, which cars, that's rounded to the nearest thousand. I've already, basically, in May, it's 600, from 487,000 in the red to 620,000 thereabout. So it's dropped even more by the end of May, which is, so you've had it to the end of April, right there, it's 487, we're going to 623. And then June, by the time we end June, it will be significantly more. You can see how the other years have dropped. Any questions about what I've said, or anything that you want me to say again?
No, thank you, I appreciate you explaining it.
Any other questions concerning financials? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Moving on to personnel.
And my recommendation, approve attorney to add some olive kelp pepper at Popper Springs, beginning May 28th, ending June 11th. Accept the resignation from the corner of Esther Moses, who missed teacher effective in the 16th. Hire the following for summer school programs, Holstein High School, Lady Ronald English Service at Lynn Marshall. Holstein High School, Paunson High School, driver's ed, Andy Howell, BMS, parent recovery teacher Shane Bush. Beth Ann, Popper Springs, Ryan Boyd, driver's ed. Paunson High School, parent recovery teacher Summer Offord, algebra, Devin Collins. ECT summer program, which is ECT teacher Amber Dunn, speech language therapist Kim Sheffield. Food service for the summer, BES, Sydney Street, Sharon Scott, and Little Yet. Penn State High School, Lady Harris, Lady Cannon, Popper Springs, Chair Bass, Penny Martin, PLE, Mary Harris, and Mary White. Hire Gaddis Counselors, Crichton, and Assistant Principals, PHS, Holstein High School, SPHS, PDLH, PDLH heads, for 30 days, summer to be divided, most of the 34 of them. And Gaddis Counselors, Crichton, and Assistant Principals at the elementary and middle school, for another 20 days to divide most of them.
For the recommendation, superintendent, personnel, do you have a motion? Moving through the personnel recommendation. Motion by Mr. Johnson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any discussion concerning personnel?
I have a question, on the assistant principals, they're usually not there during the summer? And then, but the principals are supposed to be there often. And that would be Monday through Thursday?
I have some hours.
Any other questions? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Yes, Chair of the superintendent, thank you. Comments, I have a couple of announcements I'd like to make. Number one is, this commander, Commander White, has passed away, and his dedication to be Wednesday evening, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Northside Baptist Church. Funeral service is there, morning 10:00 AM at Northside Baptist Church, and he followed him possibly on Sunday here. Most of you know, Mr. Commander, is a longtime educator, longtime superintendent of our school system. I remember getting this family at this time. Also, Commander White has divided the board to the year-end program, present now, pre-K, Wednesday, June 4th, at 9:00 AM at El Cora. Always invited to like to attend. Mr. Johnson, do you have a comment? Ms. Owens?
I'd just like to thank our newspaper lady here for being so dedicated to coming to our meetings, and I've seen her at a lot of school functions, and I just want you to know that I really, really appreciate your coverage and your work. And talking about functions, I attended lots of functions, which all of us have, dramas, music programs, art programs, graduations, quilts, band gigs. And I'd just like to say that I have really enjoyed them, it's been kind of like the ice on the cake. It's kind of like an additional benefit that we as a board would get from the tour, and I really appreciate that. And also, coming to the closing of another school year, we are saying farewell to several employees who have worked really hard and long in the Holmes County school system, and they're retiring. And I'd just would like to thank them on behalf of the board, and I would also personally thank them for their years of dedication and service to the Holmes County school system and the children. And also, I would like to say I'm very excited that the governor has approved our project for the new school. It's a great step forward for our county, I think, and I'm excited for the opportunity to be able to be on the board that gets to make a lot of these decisions. And I know that a school building is more than just bricks and mortar, it is a dynamic learning environment. And, you know, I look forward to working with the board and our teachers and the staff and the whole community in providing it for it to be that learning environment for our kids, and our teachers want to sign about that.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes, I'd like all of this to be made part of the official minutes. First of all, I'd like to ask the school board members if they would be interested in the Florida Association of School Boards coming over to give us a two-hour class on school board matters. There's no charge, and they can send the instructors to us, and we can have the class here in the district office. They said the next time they could do it would be June the 17th, and they could do it, schedule it around our school board meetings. And I wanted to find out if anybody else is interested in it. I guess we can discuss it in our workshop, okay. And the next item of unfinished business, in the May to sixth school board meeting, I brought up a motion to change the agenda format and list unfinished or new business on the agenda, which was seconded. After discussion, I amended my motion to request the superintendent to place unfinished or new business on the agenda. It was seconded and passed unanimously. The original motion has amended then passed unanimously. The legal definition of request is the act of asking or demanding. It is my understanding that since this motion was passed unanimously by the board, the superintendent has to comply with it. Mr. Attorney, can you please give us your opinion?
That's something that the school board won't be taking a look at, I would like to take a look at that.
Well, our present school board policy already prefers to unfinished business. It's listed under chapter 2.2, sub-paragraph D. It says, "All agenda items on which action is deferred shall be listed on the next agenda under unfinished business." That's part of our policy. So we already have unfinished business listed in our policy. The only other part of that would be the new business that we would have to discuss and possibly discuss that in the next workshop meeting. The other thing, on May 21st, I submitted to the superintendent in writing two items I wish to be placed on the school board agenda. Eight working days prior to this meeting, which is per our school board policy. The superintendent, for whatever reason, decided he would not place these two items on the agenda. The two items were adopting policy for agenda and adopting policy for videotaping board meetings. And in Holmes County School Board, it says, "If a question should arise in regard to granting of such requests, the superintendent and board chairperson shall confer and make a decision on any items if someone requests to be put on the agenda." Mr. Chairman, were these two items brought to your attention?
Yes, ma'am.
Since I meant all the requirements for placing these items on the meeting agenda, what was the reason or justification for not placing it on there?
After discussing with the attorney, the attorney advised that was, that was your superintendent. After that, we talked with the attorney, and he is, we can entertain a motion through the comment section. The board would like for him to research this item, report back to us.
Mr. Attorney, can you give us legal counseling on this matter? Does the superintendent have the authority to review?
I think I've discussed this with you on a previous occasion. I represent the school board, and as board, if they want me to research something, I'll be glad to issue an opinion based on what the board asks me to do. But as far as one actual board member being able to ask me to do something, I can't take action until the board actually votes to do that.
I don't understand the purpose for not allowing somebody that has reasonable requests to be put on the agenda. If I, as a school board member, can't be put on the agenda, then does the public not get to be put on the school board agenda as well? Mr. Superintendent?
Their concern.
You are the secretary of the agenda, Mr. Superintendent. We give the agenda to you, and you compile it. According to Department of Education, that's the way it works, I've been in contact with it.
Did you contact?
I contacted, you want me to give you the name?
Yeah, please.
Dr. Blanton, Rose Melton. Florida School Board Association.
If the board would like for the attorney to research, report back to us, we can entertain a motion if we're bound to do that. I'll move, we move to a motion by Mr. Johnson, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Owens, any further discussion? Mr. Johnson, yes? Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Yes, Chair of the superintendent.
Okay, another item for unfinished business, we've discussed this before, about the contribution that we give to student organizations. It was up to a cap of 1,500, nothing is in writing, and I'm all for helping students academically. In order to avoid any confusion, we need to put it in writing in our policy, along with any exceptions or exclusions to the rule. I move we discuss this in our next workshop and try to adopt some kind of written policy, so to avoid any confusion in the future.
And Ms. Coleman's made a motion to place on our workshop agenda to discuss the policy for contributions to club organization, one of the groups. Hang a motion without favor at this time. Second to the motion.
I'll say.
Second by Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Yes. Any questions, thank you.
And the last item is the graduation at Concelia, last night attended, was very nice, but the lights are still out in the parking lot.
nice, but the lights are still out in the parking lot, lot, and I would like to give an update. I was told they, they're going to call a, a bucket truck out, then I was told the wiring is bad. It was very dark up there around that bus loop, there were no lights at all.
Yep, Davey, it is. The wiring is bad, and on top of that, Thursday was struck by lightning, and that's what I found, and they were calling, yes, they're trying to do something.
So what is the, is it a big expense, or what have they got to do?
They've got to trench up all that wiring, and it's probably, as I said, you, a certain thousand dollars. We're looking at some of the offices, some of the lights, some of the poles, and I don't know, it's a lot of work. But that's a bit, that's, that's, that's.
That's what we have to do to be responsible for the buildings and safety of our students and the citizens. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Ms. Martin?
Yes.
I just wanted to want to say that we've had some exciting presentations, dramas, musicals, and graduation ceremonies that we've been so far, have been excellent, and very proud of our students and our district. That said.
I just took that, I'm going to say, I really enjoyed the last two graduations, Holmes County High School Friday night, and Boston High School, we got that land tonight, and Popper Springs Thursday. It's just, it's not going to say by a little talk, it's just the most honorable thing I get to do as superintendent with this, because I really enjoy that, to see the students and the law.
No, sir. Any other questions to the chairman?
So.
Motion by Mr. Martin, second, by Mr. Johnson, do we have any discussion concerning the general? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Take a five minute recess and reconvene for our executive.